Okay. Thank you all for all of your input and for all of the thoughtful conversation. Now, the tough part is council members. I was on city council when this whole thing started, so I know that I appreciate, as people have referred to, the Sabatini idea, but it's the group. I appreciate that. It was also when this whole concept got started, there was no definition of what the benefit area was going to be, and there was a flood of emails from all over PGI that said, "I don't have anything to do with this. You know, I don't want to have to pay for this." So, it was really, it was the request for the area, the cut, was coming from people in the Bird section, and yet, and I look back on that and I think, we didn't send invitations out to the entire of PGI. If we were to change this and send invitations out to PGI, I don't know if we opened up that and we added, if we would have enough room in this whole space for people in PGI to come and opine. So, anyway, I'll open this up to council member comments, and then we can see where we want to go from here. JaHa?
I think one thing I wanted to start with to share with you all is, we're talking now about a special assessment.
Can you speak?
We're speaking now about a special assessment, and I think with that, it's important that we share with you what the state law is in regard to that. There's things we like to do, and there's things we're not allowed to do. Legal requirements regarding a special assessment, a special assessment is a charge levied against a particular property because the property receives a special benefit from the service or improvement being funded. As established by Florida case law, two requirements exist for the imposition of a valid special assessment. One, the property assessed must derive a special benefit from the improvement or service provided, and two, the assessment must be fairly and reasonably apportioned amongst the properties that receive the special benefit. There's a big difference between a special assessment and what we call an illegal tax. Special assessments must actually benefit the property. We're talking sometimes in our discussion about general benefit, benefit to people. The reason why when we have, let's say, we don't have this in Punta Gorda, but some communities have a fire fee. A fire fee can pay for all services except for EMS, because EMS is something that's going to benefit people, not property. In this case, a determination was made by a firm, which is one of the premier economic firms in Florida. They've actually serviced 136 different cities and government agencies. We had them do this because it was so important that we get an accurate assessment of at least what's going to be the most likely determination, who's going to benefit the most. From their determination, they came up with this benefit area. Now, on this regard, even getting to the MAC committee, the reason why the MAC committee decided they weren't going to fund this is, and I'll give you the quote from this, this is from the meeting on February 14th, 2019. Buckley's pass request was briefly explained, and they're trying to get some relief to the citizens through a grant application. The WCIND won't fund the project because it goes from a non-public to a non-public canal. If MAC wants to improve some funding, it has to come out of the Boaters Improvement Fund. So, then, it goes to the next meeting. The next meeting, discussion ensued as to this request, that not benefiting the community at large, it benefits the residents of the Bird section of PGI, allowing them to get out into the harbor quicker. It's as a precedent. If you approve one channel, you need to prepare for the approval of all the channels that need to be improved in the community. You can't say that this one is somehow special, it should be paid for by those in the affected area. The point in saying this is that this is a clear precedent. Sometimes, in the discussion, we heard that we are setting some new precedent. The reason why people in Burnstour Isles are not assessed for PGI analysis is because they don't live in PGI. The reason why PGI people are not assessed in Burnstour Isles is for the same reason. We're following the procedure which the city and throughout ex of the state, inside the state of Florida, there are four forms of government. You have cities, counties, school boards, and special districts. Special districts are ones which are formed to meet a particular special benefit. In this case, because we wanted to fund this special project that was going to benefit a special area, what we mean by special benefit, it's going to actually improve on a property and the minimum property values. And so, this is why, even if someone does not use a boat, that's actually not a consideration. The consideration really is, is that the potentiality of this allows the property to be valued to be greater or less value. I just think, I just wanted to make that part clear, because I think that some of this, we have a little bit less leverage in this than it may appear that we do. We do have to stay within the confines of following state law in this regard.
Debbie?
I would like to say that I wish I had never heard the words "water access unit."[313.12][313.12](Laughter). It may be legally defensible, but it appears to me to be the most illogical method of assessing anybody for anything that I've ever seen. We have a canal maintenance account system that is in perfectly good condition. If we want to assess the benefited area, I think we should do it using the canal maintenance, one lot, one account.[344.53][344.53](Applause). I'm opposed to taking it PGI-wide, because it was never, ever sold to the citizens of the Isles, that we would all be asked to pay for this, and I think that's a bait and switch.
Gary?
I think we need to, I think we know what the answer is, but I think we need to make a determination first, whether we want, as a body, to go through with the project in the first place. So, I'm not sure what the best way would be, should we do a motion and vote on that right out the gate, or how should we do that?
I just wanted to entertain comments from anyone.
So, my comment would be is, we should determine whether we want to go through the project in the first place, and believe me, I want to, okay, but we haven't had that discussion yet.
So, Lynn, do you have comments you'd like to make before we?
Yes. I absolutely think this project needs to go forward first, let me say that straight up. I absolutely detest this water access unit process, I think it's horrible. There are hundreds of properties in the Isles that have between 85 and 90 feet of waterfront, and just because they have more than 85 feet of waterfront and less than 90 does not mean they can put two docks and two boats on that dock, on that space. I happen to be one of them, and I'm not speaking for myself, by the way, I'm speaking on behalf of the several hundred people I've talked to over the past two and a half weeks. Folks, I haven't slept for over two and a half weeks, I've been in meetings nonstop, there are people that I didn't even have time to meet with, and there's one of them out of my peripheral vision here, and I apologize for that. I simply ran out of time. I've been in citizen meetings, and on the phone, and answering emails for two and a half weeks without stopping. Literally, my husband hates me right now, because I haven't talked to him until after 11 o'clock at night, most nights. So, I can only say this, I think we need to come up with a different methodology, I think we need to say no to this resolution, and I think we need to come up with a better way to fund it. My simple suggestion, and I think it would be a very simple suggestion, is to consider taking half of the special use fund and fund the rest of it by way of $100 a year on the canal maintenance for the assessed district only.[496.31][496.31](Applause). For the assessed district only. I like Mr. Sabatini's idea, but it's not realistic. If we stay with the assessment district only, we've already told the assessment district, we are planning on assessing them this year, but we don't have to do the water access unit methodology assessment, as far as I'm concerned.[515.16][515.16](Applause). My simple solution is, let's take half of the money in the special use fund, and if you have to bill them $100 a year for the next five or six years to pay for the difference of it, then do so, but let's get rid of this water access unit methodology.
So, I'm all for moving forward on this, and moving forward now as well. I questioned the water access units when the meeting, at the first meeting, when it was suggested, and I said, "Why?" And not one council member questioned it. Everybody agreed with it, and I was like, "Really?" I also brought it up that we should probably have had a vote when that, years ago.
Oh, yeah.
And then council said, "No, we've heard enough, there's enough support for it." So, we didn't go forward. I think to have that vote now is, we're too far down the road to retract. I would like to find out, how quickly could it be, could we convert? Would we be delaying this by one year if we were to have to go? But, no, wait a minute, you might not feel that we have to wait a year, but there are a number of things that you have to go through in order to convert, and we would have to have new public hearings, and we'd have to go through the whole process all over again. And in its timing, the state has all these issues of how we have to go about this, and I will tell you, if we were to, while I like the idea of one assessment per lot, I've had conversation with Howard, and you've tended to tell me that it's going to delay it a year.
It will, if we change the methodology, which as a council you can do, we will then have to make sure that the methodology is, again, legally defensible, we're going to have to do research, we will not be able to meet the deadline of putting the assessment on the tax bill for this coming fiscal year. We will have to delay that for a whole year, because we've got to start the process again. We have to go over each parcel, identify it, make sure that it's, that we've done the research, we're going to have to send out assessment notices and go through the whole public hearing process again. There will be winners, there will be losers. That's okay, but to get it on the tax bill, it's going to delay it a year. Now, if you choose to go out and do the project immediately, and go out for construction bids, we can do that, but we will be faced with approving a construction contract and not having the funding in place. All you'll be doing is saying, "We will get the funding in place." We will get a loan and pay for it, but are you comfortable with signing a construction contract without a firm funding in place?
I am also not in favor of using any special use funds to lower this. I think the special use funds are for the benefit of the entire city of Punta Gorda and not one special area. If we were to want to do that, then I would say that then when Burnstour Isles goes to widen our lock, that we would ask for special use funds. When Burnstour Isles gets the information back from FPL on our underground wiring study, which is going to significantly increase property values and could be a benefit to the whole of the city, I would ask for special use funds then. I mean, we have, there's no end to applying special use, you know, funds to special projects, and I don't think anyone in Burnstour Isles is expecting any kind of special fund gift to help us lower what could be the obligation. And I think that while it's nice, and it's nice to have, use other people's money to help lower the cost, the cost is the cost. Gary?
First of all, I echo what you just said regarding the special use fund. I think that belongs to the whole community as a whole. That would be, using that fund directly, without any type of reimbursement mechanism of any sort, would be taking money from BSI, would be taking money from the historic district, would be taking money from virtually every aspect that we have in the general fund. So, I don't think that that should be an option. I think we have to be very cognizant, there may be what we want to do preferentially, and actually, that's an area that I certainly have a conflict, but I think we have to be pragmatic. I don't think we want to procrastinate or delay this project in any way unnecessarily, even if we might want to go with a different type of, see if a different type of method was defensible. We do know what we have now, and I think that we have to keep that in mind as we deliberate right here further.
I tend to agree with you, while I might prefer something else. We have been in this discussion about water access units for two years. We've had a long time to digest this, and I think, I understand residents perhaps not paying attention, I see this all the time, and when somebody gets something in the mail, all of a sudden, it's in black and white, and it's in front of you, and I get that. And we see residents, you know, sending us emails all the time, or having to clarify. But, I think, I know that the city is willing to work with condominium associations, Howard, as you've stated. All we have to do is bring in, schedule a meeting with the city and bring in the documentation that would be needed to show how the docks are distributed amongst whoever the property owners are, because all we have is the property appraiser's website that we can, you know, we don't know what agreements there are between condominium associations and the owners. So, we can work that out.
Yeah, we would need a condo association to come into our office and have concrete, refutable evidence that we can research and take a look at, but right now, we don't have that.
We will be hearing something for the church after this, which would be, in theory, they would never have to pay the funds, but we'll talk about that in the next hearing. Debbie?
My question is, if you do this with the condos, and you realize that, let's say they were assessed for 21, and really, there should only be 10, then that's 11 at $1,000 of generated income that's not coming back to us, where does that money get absorbed from?
I don't think it was a matter of that it was reducing the number of water access units, it was how the water access units are distributed over the number of condos that are in that condominium association. For example, if there were 50 condos and 25 had docks, right now, we are charging all 50 condo owners an equal number, whereas it should be that the 25 who have the docks are the ones.
I know, but then are they going to have to pay two units to make up, because somehow you've got to get back to 50?
I have to look at the actual numbers.
But, I want to know, where does that money come from? Does the city then going to have to front that money?
The, again, each condo association needs to come in, and we need to have clear documentation as to whether some, one of the units has a total right to a particular dock or lift, and never gives up that right, and no one else can have that, but we need clear documentation. If by some chance, that we assign 10 water access units to a particular parcel property, and it turns out, we were off by one, then that is taken care of, because in our calculations for the total project cost, we have what's called a 10% water access unit uncollectible.
Okay.
So, we have, we could have made a mistake, okay? We can do the best we can, and so, we have already found one, where we have miscalculated by one water access unit. So, we already built in a 10% factor for that.
Did that answer your question? Okay. So, I'm hearing, I'm beginning to hear some direction?
I think we should move on to, but I wanted to add, could we possibly make the payment period extended to five years, so people who are having, could have a harder time, they can be able to pay that?
Of course. I would be in favor of that.
That's not the solution. They still have to pay it, and it's going to be a penalty if they do that, they have to pay interest on it. It's just, that isn't, it isn't fair. It isn't fair, and it isn't equitable, and that's the defensible words that I've seen in the law.
But, the reason why people who don't live in PGI don't pay PGI assessment fees because they don't receive the property.
I'm not suggesting anybody outside of.
No, the reason why people who don't live in PGI don't pay the canal district in PGI a fee is because they don't receive the property value benefit of being in the canal district. The same reason, those who are not in the benefit area are not going to receive the benefit to their property. This is state law, this is a precedent that's practiced throughout the state of Florida.
I don't think that that's what Vice Mayor Matthews is saying. I think what she's saying is, she does not agree with the water access unit methodology, and I think that, you know, while I didn't agree with it, here we are two years later. It's, are we going to proceed with this now and get Buckley's pass done, or are we going to delay this for a year? I'm not in favor of us committing to start the construction without a funding mechanism in place.
I'm not either.
Gary, you're not either?
I'm not either.
Okay.
I think we need the funding in place, I think we need to be very concerned that there is a window of opportunity, potential, has been outlined by our consultant, that we do have three contractors that are rolling down large projects at about the same time we want to start. So, we've got the three potential bidders right out the gate that won't have to re-stage equipment, hire new workers, they have those people in place, et cetera. That might give us, put us in a better bidding position. Anything we do to procrastinate it is only going to exasperate that bidding process, I believe.
Debbie, do you have anything? Personally, I think if staff said, "Yes, we could turn this around in two months and have this ready to go, and we could have all the public hearings that we needed to have," then I could support it, but we can't, without delaying it for a year.
I have a question as to why. We've already told the people in the assessment district they're going to be assessed on this year's tax roll. We didn't tell them how much until they got the letter. So, why do we have to start over again?
Because you've changed a whole methodology, and you have to then figure out what the new assessment's going to be per parcel, and the condos, and the properties that are currently not even in our assessment district. Then we have to resend the notices, advertise, hold public hearings, it takes time. It takes time.
It's time to declare legal.
Realistically, I don't see how we can get it done and get it on this year's tax bill. I don't see how it's possible. Because we have to have this to the property, the tax collector. What is the date?
We have to certify the tax roll by September 15th, but we need to certify the tax roll to the tax collector by, they do it by September 15th, so we need to provide the information to the county well before that.
It doesn't have to be in the trim notice that goes out in August?
We were trying to attempt to get any prepays done before the trim notices go out, so there wouldn't be questions if they did prepay, it wouldn't even have been on their trim notice. And just to answer the question about the noticing provisions, with the new assessment, there is a possibility that the maximum assessment for some of the properties out there will go up, and they have to be re-noticed. So, if you change the methodology, it doesn't mean that the amount is going to stay at 983. We have to take whatever the new lots are, figure out how to deal with condos, which is not by lot, and then divide that among the project costs. There is a possibility that there will be properties whose proposed assessed value now will go up, and they have to be properly noticed and have a hearing under the statute. So, and they require at least 20 days' notice, just like the letters we sent out, we had to have at least 20 days before the public hearing.
Nancy?
Debbie?
The overwhelming number of emails that I received, or people that I spoke with, it wasn't so much the dollar amount, it was the principle of the thing. It was the fact that they were being charged $998 because they had an extra half a foot, or they, I mean, it, there's a time when you do something because it's right, and there's a time when you do something because it's expeditious, and I'm not sure where this council is going to come in on this, but, you know, I can't, I can't look some of these people in the eye and say, "Well, yeah, that makes sense, you have an extra half a foot, you have to pay another $1,000." I'm sorry, I can't.
I have the same issue. I have a gentleman in my district that has 85.1 feet of seawall, and he got two water access units. Most of the properties on any kind of a turn or a bend in a street in the community have more than 85 feet. It's just the way the lots were plotted. It doesn't mean you could put more than one boat, or more than one lift on that space, you just can't do it. It's not physically possible with our current rules that we have for 45-degree angles and everything else. It's not possible. So, it's unfair to charge people for two water access units if they can't put two docks or two boats, or two boat lifts on their property. Just isn't right. It's totally flawed. And the fact that all these condo groups have now come forward and said, "We don't even have water access, we don't own a dock." People in our condo community own and are deeded their docks. Why are we billing people who live in their condo group who don't own a dock and don't have water access? That's, it's wrong.
And we said we will fix that.
Pardon?
And we said we will fix that.
I know, but I'm saying, these are all the reasons why I'm.
I understand, but it's also, we've been talking about this for two years.
I understand that.
It's like, this problem just didn't pop up.
It popped up when they got the letter in the mail telling them how much they owe.
Yes.
That's when it popped up.
Exactly.
It just popped up for me, Mayor Bravkey.
Okay.
Really.
Gary?
Whatever we do is not going to be fair. That's not what the issue is. The issue is, is we need to do what's best for the community. Some people will lose, hopefully more people will win. We need to take the hard decision, understanding that we're going to anger some people, we're going to please some people, we're not going to please everybody. So, we have to make our decisions and go forward and go presently. And I still have to say, as much as I would prefer a different methodology, I don't, I see it procrastinating this project, and I can't, in my mind at this point in time, support changing the course, rather, I think we need to stay the course to get this project to go, and to go soon, rather than a year from now.[1580.13][1580.13](Applause).
David, do you have a comment?
If I might, just to, with all due respect to Councilmember Wine's last comment, I'm mindful of the fact that we are actually in litigation defending the current methodology for the assessment of maintaining the seawalls and the canals. When you made your comment about it, whatever you do, whatever we do is not going to be fair, I interpret that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you were saying that basically with air quotes, that there are going to be people that no matter what we do, they're going to think that it's unfair to them. But, the role of this council is to adopt a methodology that, based on the data and the information that our legal counsel has presented to us, is in fact fair and reasonable based on all of the information from a legal perspective, and that was the context in which your comment was offered.
You know me very well, and thank you for translating my Chicago mind.
And Heather, would you like to make comments for us, please?
Your city attorney and I had the same follow-up, that we wanted to come up and just make that correction. There are.
Can you introduce yourself?
Heather Ensenosa with Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson. Under state law, the fair and reasonable apportionment prong of this.
They can't hear you. It's on, it's on, you just have to put it right up to your mouth like you're almost going to eat it.
Under the state law, as Councilmember Cummings very accurately described, there's a two-prong test. Special benefit to property, we've already discussed that, fair and reasonable apportionment. For the fair and reasonable apportionment prong, the state courts have been very clear, there could be more than one way to do it. Reasonable minds can differ. Mathematical precision is not required, but there needs to be a logically and factually-driven way of spreading the costs. We arrived at water access units because that is used quite commonly, and because your city code that has been in existence for quite some time, Section 66, has very detailed rules for assigning water access units to these properties. And that's where the 80, I didn't come up with the 85 feet. That's where your 85 feet comes from. Any property that is on a canal of a certain width and has a certain amount of frontage is allowed to have two water access units. If there are unique circumstances with regard to angles and that, where they cannot actually fit it, they can appeal that, and that can be corrected. There are certain mechanisms in place already in your code in Section 21A that would allow the city manager to make those corrections. Even after the roll is certified, it can be corrected, it has to then go through the tax collector's process, but there are ways to do that and to make those corrections. And so, to your one constituent who had angle issues, I would certainly encourage them to bring that forward, and if that is shown to be problematic to have two, that can be accommodated.
And for those that may have missed the introduction, Heather is our special counsel who developed, has the expertise and the experience in developing these methodologies that has prepared what is before the city council today. that has prepared what is before the city council today.
I'll make a motion for approval of this methodology, the referendum with this methodology.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Does that include, do we have to have as a part of a motion, adjusting for the condominium? Does that have to be a part of it?
You're approving the resolution.
Yes.
The actual final assessment resolution. That's what you're, that's what, that's what we're asking you to do.
Yes. And of course, that gives you the discretion to work out what you need to with condo associations.
Ja, how could you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
I want to know what I'm second.
It's for this resolution, but of course, giving Howard the leverage to be able to negotiate how he needs to with the condo associations.
Well, that was part of what I was wondering, if we needed to specify within a resolution that it does or not.
I think with that motion, that is accurate. Now, let me just tell you one thing, if we do get some documentation in from these condos that shows that certain units should be charged for all of the water access units, and the other ones should be taken off, we will need to send notice to those, the ones that are going up, and we'll bring back a resolution to amend this one to the city at a future date.
Okay.
That's fine.
That's how we'll handle it, then. There's been a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
Yes.
Would all those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I am left with no choice but to say no. I'm sorry. I want the project, but not this way.
Okay, so Debbie is also a no.
So, it's three to two.
It's three to two. The motion carries three to two. Okay. Okay. Can you, we have another, we have another public hearing to follow, so if you are going to leave the room, can you please be a little more quiet? Thank you. The Buckley's pass.
I'll let you handle that. Do you want to?
Howard, do you want to take, you want to introduce this item? The agreement with the church?
Sure. Do you want?
Our meeting is still in session, folks. Can you please?
We have a final public hearing here. We're dealing with the Congregational United Church, where we have met with the pastor and a member of the congregation, and about council's direction that we will not be sending the church an assessment bill. And that is what this agreement that we have in front of you does. So, Mikel, why don't you go over the agreement?
Now, and let me just, procedurally, this is not a public hearing, but we did not have a special point on our agenda for public comments for the non-public hearing items. So, before you have your deliberation on this, after Mikel's staff presents the item, if any members of the public want to speak on this item, we should give them an opportunity to do so before you take your vote. It's not a public hearing, but we, but they are entitled to comment on it, and with the exception of the representative of the church, we have not had that opportunity to comment yet.
I have a question, though. We've really, the, I know we want to take public comment, but the comment, we have put together a, we've met with the church, and we've put together a plan that is very beneficial to the church. So, can we make it clear as to what this plan is? Because based on the emails that have come in, it was very clear to me, people did not understand this agreement. The church is never going to have.
Staff, staff can give background on it. I'm just saying, procedurally, it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
But, but public is entitled to comment on this item in general. That's the rule.
So, we'll let staff introduce it?
And then public will have public comment.
And then we'll have public comment.
And then you'll take a vote.
Okay.
Good afternoon again, Mikel Finkel, Paralegal. So, when we discussed this, the council had a discussion regarding the church parcel when you adopted the initial assessment resolution and the concern. So, just for everyone's benefit, the parcel that the church sits on is a four-acre parcel. It's zoned general multifamily, 15 units per acre. So, it does have entitlements under Chapter 6 to docks. Our GIS staff went through AutoCAD, a system program, to put in an idea of what those docks would be. They would be limited to 26, just based on there's, the properties surrounding already have docks, so they wouldn't fit. So, as the legal counsel advised us, we understand it's a church, however, the parcel cannot be exempted, or we cannot waive the assessment. The best way for this city to deal with that is to enter into a deferral agreement. So, the city will actually pay the assessment upfront, and then, in the event certain things happen, such as the sale of the property, or it's not, no longer used for its exempt purpose, or docks, or, I'm sorry, water access units were ever constructed on the property, that the city would be paid back. As the city manager said, we sat down with the church, we had an agreement for this deferral. There was, after the church leadership looked at it, they, the city recommended interest on the payment. With no timeframe on the agreement, the interest could quickly, you know, grow higher than the principal, and that was never our intent. So, when staff published the agenda, we put in there a recommendation to cap the interest after 10 years. It's somewhere around $7,000. Church leadership reviewed it, came back to us, and they are requesting that city council waive the interest, thereby just the principal would be repaid. So, that's the agreement we are putting before council today for consideration.
Okay, so that's the introduction. So, if there's, are any comments that want to be made, please come to the podium, you have three minutes.
Do we have to sign again?
No, this is not a public hearing. State your name.
Well, I'm Bob Toth. I'm president of Seminole Lakes POA, and I agree that we should not assess the church because they would probably go bankrupt if you do. So, and I'm, well, who's left? I think they would agree the same thing.
We have to assess.
But, the city's going to pay the $20,000, which would come out of the general fund. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. That's not that much, so we still support it. And I speak for more than myself. We have 700 residents, and I think they would support this, too. So, and also, thank you for approving that project. It's been on the board for two years, and you had the guts to do it.
Are there any other comments?
And for the record, there was the request that the representative of the church that spoke in the first hearing, his comments would be transferred to the public comment section for this item.
I mean, the item is more that the church is never going to have to pay it. Whether there's interest on it or not, it would be something that the church is really, if the church were to cease to exist and they were to sell the property, that's when the city would be paid back. So, it really wouldn't be, as long as the congregation exists, it is what it is.
Or if the congregation outgrows its current space and goes somewhere else and then sells the property, that's when the city will recoup its fund.
Good point.
So, so, again, there is a question that you're ultimately going to need to determine as part of this item, and that is whether or not interest will accrue, and if there, and if interest will accrue, do you want to cap it at 10 years as staff has suggested?
I do have a question.
Carrie?
If the, if the, if the congregation were to grow and decide to move and sell the property to a different religious congregation, would the, the new congregation still be able to maintain this deferral? Because the use wouldn't change.
If I'm not mistaken, it says, if the property ceases to be qualified for exemption from ad valorem taxes as a property used for charitable, religious, scientific, or literary purpose under Florida law. That's, that's on the cover. Was that included in the actual agreement?
That is in there for, for this entity. If they sell or transfer it, and I can put a little background after talking to them, the church is a smaller entity of a bigger organization, so the current entity can't sell the church. If they no longer have the church, it goes back to the larger organization. If that organization were to sell the property, then they would have to pay back.
All right. And then, at that point in time, if they sold it to another religious organization, and the city council at that time decided to defer payment, another agreement would have to be entered. Otherwise, that organization would have to pay.
Gene Polowski, West End Drive. I would like you to amend that agreement to include any income property established there. In other words, there's been a growing trend in the country of churches establishing, establishing some residential units up there and renting them out, sometimes to missionaries. In the case of universities, they have rented out to other facilities. And so, if there's, that's an income generating property, then our agreement should be amended to cover that situation.
I wonder if they did that, would it, would it cease to be qualified for exemption from ad valorem taxes? Because I think that's the key.
That's a good question, but it does happen that nonprofits are doing that now. They're renting out facilities. Even when you send your kid to Marquette University, for instance, and they have established dorms that have a different basis of rental, rather than the normal tuition and fees.
Yeah.
It becomes a bit of a problem, so you need to cover yourself a little bit in that area.
Thank you, Gene. Okay.
On the issue of leasing, renting, or subleasing in whole or in part, any portion of the property would trigger a repayment. Obviously, this is a contract, so if there are unique circumstances and the church pursues that, they can always come to the city, and you guys can determine whether you wanted to modify this agreement based upon the facts that are presented to you at that time.
Okay. Okay. There's no more public comment? One more public comment?
Just one more. It's in, thank you. We really appreciate the offer of the deferment contract, because it alleviates for us a great deal of stress in figuring out how do we, how we would fund the assessment. So, we're just ecstatic that you're reconsidering this deferment. We thank you very much.
And would you again state your name for the record, please?
Mike Ford, pastor of congregation in the United Church of Christ.
I sincerely understand. I was president of a church congregation in Colorado, and I know that on our budget, $20,000 is a big hit, so.
I would just like to make a comment that this particular congregation does a lot of quiet public good, so we're doing it what my tradition calls a mitzvah.
Okay, so is there any more council member comments on this? So, what you, what's your pleasure? Councilmembers, I'll entertain a motion if somebody.
Before you do that, we need, you need to decide what to do about the interest.
Oh, the interest.
I moved, I'd like to move that we eliminate the interest, just to keep it clean. You can't hear me?
I can't hear you. You're not talking.
Oh, I would like to, I would like to move that we eliminate the aspect of the interest accrual, just to keep it simpler.
I second that.
So, there's been a motion and a second to eliminate the interest on this loan?
Yes.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I believe that the motion carried.
And then a motion for approval for the whole resolution itself? Do we need to do a second one? Are we done?
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
Oh, deferral agreement.
The deferral agreement?
There's a deferral agreement.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong, you're right. Sorry about that. I'm looking at the wrong thing. The deferral agreement with the Congregational United Church. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will have council member comments. Carrie?
That's it.
Okay. Debbie?
I'm done.
You're done. Lynn?
Poke a fork in me, I'm done.
Same fork for you? Yes.
Councilmember Lynn, we couldn't hear you over here. Could you speak into the microphone?
Poke a fork in me, I'm done.
Thank you to everybody who came today and who participated in the conversation.
Now, we have citizen comments.
On any item?
You have three minutes.
Not necessarily on the agenda.
Carolyn Freeland, resident and former mayor of this great city of Punta Gorda. I am so pleased that the project is moving forward. I am disappointed, though, that the council decided to retain that assessment process. It just seems very convoluted, and it seemed by the comments that we heard here today that it's going to impinge on a lot of our residents, and it is also going to split our community. So, I am very sorry about that. I appreciate Vice Mayor Matthews and Councilmember Carrie for negating that, but I just had to say that. But I am pleased that the project is moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? That said, meeting adjourned.